Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for October 25th, 2021. I have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to contractual negotiations and the employment of particular individual.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for October 25th, 2021. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the son of Rocky Soraka, the niece of Dennis Verbois, and the sister-in-law of Andrea Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the board for a point of order. Can we please move the external auditor report to the top of the agenda?
Yes.
Ron, do you need this? The auditor's report. Do you want to introduce?
We do not. We've asked, we've had our end-of-year external audit report, but shall Ms. Bost introduce?
Okay.
Ms. Bataglia as Chair of Audit?
Sure.
So we have Ms. Ali Bataglia from R.S. Abrams, who will present to us the end-of-year financials for the school year that ended June 30th, 21.
Now I see, okay. Good evening. I wanted to let the board know that I did discuss in full detail the financials-
I'm sorry, Ali, your mask needs to be on. I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. I did discuss in full detail the financial statements and communication letters with the audit committee, so we did go in full detail. So I'm just going to provide you with a brief overview. Basically, there's two sets of financial statements. There's the Modified Accrual Basis of Accounting, which is short-term in nature, is basically your general fund, your operating budget, and then we convert that into accrual basis of accounting, which means we put on all your long-term assets and long-term liabilities. The district did implement a new GASB statement, and all school districts are required to follow government accounting standards boards, and the standards boards basically issues new statements every year. This year, it was Statement Number 84, which had to do with fiduciary activities, which is basically, it just was a reporting change, so where your activities were reported in your trust and agency fund, and your scholarships in the private purpose got moved either to general fund or a new miscellaneous special revenue fund. We did go into detail, we discussed the district's reserves and the funding level. The district does have a fund balance plan and annually updates that to make sure that they're in compliance with laws and regulations. Overall, the district has a healthy balance sheet. We did issue an unmodified opinion. In auditor's language, we call that a clean opinion, which is the best opinion you can have. I'm happy to report there were no material weaknesses. We just had some recommendations to improve the district's internal controls, but like I said, there was nothing material in nature. I also wanted to thank Tom, Alicia, and the entire business office for another smooth audit. We were able to get everything done in a timely fashion. Alicia is great at uploading all the documents that we need to complete the audit in a timely fashion. And if there's any questions from the board, I'd be happy to take them at this point.
Thank you. Rashmi, is there anything that you needed to add? Lisa?
No questions. Just, I'll echo Ali's sentiments. Thank you, Tom, and your team, and Rashmi for leading the way on that.
Cheryl?
No questions. Thank you.
Mike?
The only question I have is, I guess, the extra classroom activity fund.
We did, we have two minor comments on that. A lot of it has already been implemented. These two got held up because of COVID, but again, we have another meeting with the extra classroom funds treasurer to re-review it just one more time, so I think we're going to have these taken care of soon.
And we're getting better with that? We're closing it up?
Yes, yes, it definitely is getting better. I also did point out, though, because of COVID, there wasn't that much activity, so I'm hoping that it doesn't escalate. We have more findings, you know, as they start upcoming with their fundraising. So hopefully, the district will, you know, they've been reiterating the proper controls, and that will just stay in place for over this next year.
Okay. And just for the audience to know, it's nothing wrong with the activity funds, it's just their reporting mechanism. Is that correct, Tom?
Yes, the extra class activity funds are more student-based, and the idea is to push down these controls and the expectations to the student level and each one of the clubs. That's something we continue to do. It's an ongoing educational process, and we're on top of that again this year.
Okay, terrific. Anything else to be added?
Nope, just that.
Well, good. Ron, Lisa? All right, thank you. Tom, thank you very much for all your hard work, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ali.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, safe drive.
Thanks.
Okay. We're going to go on to public comments. So our first public comment, I'm going to read this before we start. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns or questions tonight. Speakers were asked to sign up on the appropriate signup sheet with their phone name, address, and email. If your name is not legible or readable, you will not be called upon. Our Policy 1230, Public Participation at Board Meetings, clearly states, "We do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or other disruptions from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute speaking time, we will turn off your microphone." Our first public comment period is 15 minutes in length. It is about agenda-related items only, and we will not be extending it. So I will start the call. Our first speaker is Kathryn Grabash.
My name is Kathryn Grabash. I'm a parent of a child in this district and also an educator. I am here tonight to share my support of the Equity Task Force DEI initiatives that are being proposed by Dr. Hatter tonight. I spoke at the Board of Ed meeting back in July, and I am glad our supportive voices were heard and next steps are being taken. I continue to recall the meeting where Yorktown alumni shared their experiences with microaggressions, racist incidents, and other traumatizing experiences. Because of them, and because I want my children to go to a school in a culturally relevant environment, I hope that the board moves forward with the proposed DEI initiative. Our children need to be taught the truth, and sometimes that includes information that is hard to hear. However, as the great American playwright and novelist James Baldwin once said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." Our district should be empowering the teachers and staff to get the training and information they need so that they can in turn bring topics into the classroom to help facilitate critical thinking, problem-solving, and equitable practices. I want to see the district do what is right and move forward with things like reevaluating the curriculum to make sure all voices are heard in all subjects, dismantling policies that may uphold prejudiced points of view, and exploring ways to make our school community more inclusive, to name a few. To ignore the fact that our country is at a crossroads right now is to play into the rhetoric that truth is subjective, and that our students don't deserve to learn in an environment that both supports them and exposes them to facts. That thinking ends up hurting everyone. I urge the board and Dr. Hatter to be on the right side of history by respecting everyone's humanity, regardless of race, religion, sexuality, disability, and gender. I hope that the board votes in favor tonight of moving diversity, equity, and inclusion work forward, and I look forward to hearing all the wonderful things that come from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Ranco?
My name is Alyssa Ranco. I grew up in Yorktown. I'm a Yorktown parent and an area educator. I came also to lend my voice of support for the district's efforts at implementing diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, including the Equity Task Force. As a teacher and a mother, I understand that school needs to be a safe place where students feel seen, understood, and valued, regardless of whether they're part of a majority group. Yorktown Central School District provides a public education, and the New York State Department of Ed is determined through academic study and listening to student voices that inclusivity unfortunately is not something that happens on its own. It needs to be actively and consciously implemented. The state has determined that schools, through the critically responsive and sustainable education framework, must bring inclusive practices into our work with students. These practices are for our students, about our students, and to educate our students, to include histories previously omitted and are misrepresented. And really, what is the alternative? Exclusion, denial, rejection, lack of validation, not being seen? School's not supposed to put students at risk. It's supposed to foster personal development and learning. If students don't see themselves represented in the curriculum, they disconnect. So I fully support the district's efforts to implement diversity, equity, and inclusion principles and practices because it is for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Mirakandi?
It's a valiant effort. Jan Mirakandi, I am a parent of two children who have graduated recently from Yorktown High School, and I'm also here to lend my voice in support of the DEI initiative. To that end, I want to share a personal story, and since my kids aren't in the school system anymore, and I do have my daughter's permission to share this story. She came home one day from school, and she was very, very excited about this new kid in her class. And she's like, "Mommy, mommy, there's a new boy." "Okay." And so I said, "What's so exciting about this boy?" You know, "He's brown." I'm like, "Okay." And she says, "I'm not the only brown kid in my class anymore. This is my child, my firstborn child. Not shocking anybody here, I'm not brown." And it wasn't until that moment that I looked at my kid and realized she saw herself so differently than I saw her. She was nine at the time. I hadn't given my child's race an ounce of thought, I confess to you. I'm embarrassed to say that now. She clearly had given it a considerable amount of thought. And in fourth grade, she taught me what DEI was all about. She wanted to be seen, she wanted to be heard, and she wanted to know she wasn't alone. There is not one parent on either side of this aisle that does not want that for their child. I can't believe that to be true. So I encourage you to please support the DEI initiative, move it forward, and support all of our children. So, thank you.
Thank you. Maya Price?
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Hatter, Board of Ed members, and the Yorktown community. Hi, my name is Maya Price. I am in sixth grade, and I go to M.E.S.M.S. For those of you who don't think we need to teach the truth about our past and our differences, I'm going to tell you a reason why I think we should. What I'm about to tell you did not happen 10 years ago, five years ago, it happened only five months ago. I was on my bus, and I got into a disagreement with another student. In the middle of the disagreement, the kid said, "Shut up, N." N meaning the Edward, but I was taught and raised never to say that word because of how disrespectful it is. I was shocked and hurt. I was shocked that my generation could even still be saying that word, and that there are still people out there who don't understand the true meaning of the word. See, when it happened, my heart's reaction was to punch the student in the face. But then came the voice in my head that told me to do the right thing, be the bigger person, and walk away. I feel that if the kid understood the true meaning of the word, then maybe the student wouldn't have used it in such a rude way, and hopefully, there would have been a different turnout. I will never forget the way I felt. It honestly feels like someone is breaking your heart in half. So why do I think that we should learn about our past differences so that what happened to me doesn't happen to another black or Mexican? Thank you for listening, and have a great night.
Thank you. Rachel Frederick?
I look forward to the overview of the district's plans to implement the NiSEED-CRS framework. I fully support this and hope that Yorktown adopts it with fidelity and urgency as outlined in the plan. I think the implementation is a start in the right direction, and I'm happy to see us moving forward. How we do that should be guided by best pedagogical practices and widely established knowledge about creating welcoming school environments, which means addressing underlying dynamics. I'd love to share with the school community the hopes I have for my own children's educational experiences in Yorktown. I hope that they read books featuring main characters of different backgrounds, ethnicities, abilities, and gender identities. I hope that they read literature and poetry written by people who do not look like them or experience the world as they do, not just for Hispanic Heritage Month, or Black History Month, or Women's History Month, but all year long. I hope that they're exposed to world cultures by way of firsthand experiences, like schoolwide assemblies and partnerships with resources like Peace Corps or Human Library. I hope they have teachers from diverse backgrounds. I hope they're free to discover and express themselves and their perspectives outside of expected stereotypes and gender norms in safe and supportive environments. I hope that they understand that history is subjective. I hope that they'll be informed and brave enough to stand up against mistreatment of themselves and others. I hope that they have teachers with adequate training to mediate hard conversations. I hope that they never hear racial, homophobic, or transphobic slurs tossed around in hallways casually with no repercussions. I hope that they discuss society, current events, civics, and our true history, good and bad. I hope that they have tough conversations, are celebrated for their differences, are open to new ideas, develop self-confidence, and learn about the world past the lens of Yorktown. And I hope that they are ready to enter a global society that increasingly prioritizes diversity, equity, and inclusion. The four pillars of the CRS framework, I do believe, help us work towards the goals that the alumni and the students, and Maya, spoke out about in 2020. And I once again thank the board for listening to the students that they serve. It shows respect for those that you've worked to educate and faith in the systems that informed them. Yorktown has a wonderful reputation, not in small part to your leadership and service, to ensuring that best practice guides policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the end of our first public comment. We're going to move on to the superintendent report. Ron?
Good evening, everyone. It is wonderful to see an audience here this evening. I wanted to, before I go into my presentation this evening and provide our community with an update on where we are, where we've been, where we're headed with regard to the Cultural Awareness and Equity Task Force, I just wanted to take this opportunity to address a couple of other important items in our district. First of all, last week was Board of Education Recognition Week, and I just want to thank members of our board. You set such a wonderful example for all of us. Your support is so deeply appreciated, and the number of hours that you spend, whether it's in policy committee, audit committee, steering committee, fiscal advisory, at these meetings, the time you invest as volunteers is remarkable. And what guides you is what you believe is best for children, and I truly appreciate everything that you do for the children of Yorktown. I say that as superintendent, I say that as a resident here, and I say that as a father of two children in this school district. So, thank you. I appreciate you very much. We all do. With regard to just some other things that I want to talk about, I am working with the county and the State Department of Health. One of the initiatives that I'd like to see in place is a test to stay. I'd like to get rid of quarantines for our students. For me, they don't make much sense because transmission within the school is very low, given the mitigation measures that we're taking. So one of the conversations that I had as recently as today was talking about if a student is exposed, rather than sending them home for 10 days, can we work out some kind of testing mechanism in school? Rapid test, free parental consent, have them test negative, and show up to school during that quarantine period? We need our kids in school. For me, that's a non-negotiable. Children need to be in school, and we want them here. And I'm hoping that we can get some leverage, and if anyone wants to call the Department of Health and echo that, they've heard it from me. So this will not be a new conversation that they're having. We want our kids in school. We want them here every day. And if they're exposed, we believe that a test-to-stay option, I believe that a test-to-stay option is a very fair way to proceed. So that's one of the things that I'd like to share that I'm working on. I generally, I work well with the State Department of Health and with the Westchester County Department of Health, but this is one that I really would like to see a greater sense of urgency on. So I share that with you. More to come, and I'll update as soon as there's progress on that. With regard to universal pre-K, our school district was given an allocation to start up a universal pre-K program, and we've reviewed all of the factors. You don't just start a universal pre-K program. There's a lot of work that goes into, and it's not that we shy away from the work, but there's no guarantee in my conversations with the state that the funding will continue beyond year one. So you start the program, you get the funding, and then how do you sustain the program? So that's something that's on my mind. Also, room in our schools is a challenge. We can accommodate about 88 children with the allocation that we were given. We typically have about 250 children on a grade level, so that means that we would have to put up a lottery system. One-third will make it in, two-thirds don't make it in. And that's something that I don't necessarily agree with, and then if we were to assign this to a third-party provider, there's no guarantee on the quality of the program that they'll provide. And if we're going to put Yorktown's name on something, I really want it to be well-done and thoughtful. So I'm going to recommend to the board that we decline those monies. We just don't have the capacity to start a UPK program. Also, there's something in the federal pipeline where the program may look completely different next year. So rather than start a program, the potential of the funding being cut, now what do we do? Do we cut other programs to make this happen? Do we cut the program after a year? I'd like to see a little more certainty with the funding stream before we commit to the resources. And right now, space is really an issue with the COVID restrictions, and we have to space the desks and the students apart, so we have some space challenges. So that's my recommendation, is that we will decline that money. We don't, we don't, but it's something that I think is important for us to at least have on record that we had this discussion and that there was a conversation that was had. Now with regard to the cultural awareness and equity presentation, Yvette, if you can pull the, oh, I see it there. Thank you. So I have a slide presentation. The slide presentation will be on our website tomorrow. I'd like to share with you the presentation this evening. There is, I will not be asking the board for any action items this evening, so I will not be asking for an approval on any adoptions tonight. With regard to our work in cultural awareness and equity, I would like to talk to you about where we've been and where I see the next aspects of this work, and where we see the next aspects of this work. I want to start by saying that we live in an amazing school district. I am so proud to call Yorktown home. We have such a great school district, and I think we all know that. I think many of us know that. Sadly, there's a reality, and the reality has been some deeply troubling incidents that have happened to many of our students. We have heard dating back many years, but most recently, spring and summer of 2020, we have heard stories of current students. We've heard stories from alumni. We've heard students, stories from families about experiences that have been had in our schools. It was painful. It was painful to hear the experiences that we know that we're better than. In many instances, the individuals didn't fully realize the impact of their words, and they didn't realize the impact of their actions. Some were with regard to race, some were with regard to gender, some with regard to ethnicity, some with regard to religion, and then there were some that didn't have any nexus to any characteristic they would just mean, and it was a form of bullying. I was also made aware of some considerations for our school district moving forward. Please be considerate when you schedule December events with regard to the first night of Hanukkah. Please be mindful of religious fasting. Please be mindful of scheduling on days of religious observance for some religions when school is in session. We hear you. We hear that, and we understand it. But never forget, we have the greatest students. We have a great faculty and staff who are committed to your children. You have a great leadership team in Board of Education who are committed to your children. We always base what we do on the four principles that I shared July 12th. Understanding, kindness, respect, empathy, for all students. Understanding, kindness, respect, empathy. I go back to those four really, really important points because they mean a lot to me. On the next slide, Yvette? Slide three. When we thought of the name of this task force, I just want to take you back in time because there's some confusion as to the chronology of events. I just want to share that the creation of the task force, that work happened prior to any petition that was received. It happened because we began to hear stories from our alumni, our students, and families. And we said, "Gee, we need to look at our practices to make sure that there's nothing intentional that we're doing. We need to look at our practice to make, practices to make sure that there's nothing unconsciously that we're doing. And we need to look at our practices to make sure that these horrible experiences for children are not repeated." We could have called our task force by any name. We specifically chose Cultural Awareness and Equity. And Yvette, on the slide that you have up, are the definitions there? So I won't read them, I won't read them to you, but when I think of cultural awareness, I don't like to use the word to define the word, but it's being aware and respectful of the diversity in our learning community. When I think about equity, I think about giving students what they need individually to succeed. That can look different for all students. It can be crafting an IEP for a student, providing English language learning for a student who isn't quite fluent in the language yet, providing academic intervention services for students, a summer reading program, providing a robust arts, theater, athletics program because that's what keeps a child connected to their school. That's how I define equity. Equity doesn't happen at the expense of others. We look at each child individually and determine how we can best support them where they are. On the next slide, I just want to give you an overview of the task force. We met between 60 and 75 minutes per meeting. We attempted to meet every month. COVID was a reality for us because keeping our children in school every day was our number-one and primary focus last year. So the task force began last school year. We spent the opening meetings on learning how to have honest and open conversations. When you bring 18 different faculty and staff together who have different perspectives, it takes time to build trust and rapport, and that was important to our group. So we spent the early meetings investing in that work. We also identified priorities to guide the work. The three priorities that we identified, they were presented to the board in November of 2020. We're looking at the curriculum, specifically our school libraries, looking at policies, and looking at professional development for faculty and staff. We spent time looking at Juneteenth, which was a newly-recognized state holiday, and we didn't have a database of resources for that holiday, so that took time to develop for our task force. We discussed existing practices within the district. What are we doing currently? We were pleased in many regards to see our robust character education program and other programs that we had in our schools. Our Middle School International Night is one such night that we're very proud of. Our GSA at the high school is another source of pride for us. So we recognize that our school district already had some really meaningful activities, programs, and celebrations. These are not new concepts in Yorktown, I just want to clarify that. These are not new. These are not new. The, these celebrations, these clubs have been in existence for many, many years. The Dignity for All Students Act of 2012 was passed to provide students in New York State schools with a safe and supportive environment, free from discrimination, intimidation, taunting, harassment, bullying. The district was named a national school district of character in 2016, and the 11 principles that went into assessing our application are grounded in inclusivity. You can go to the next slide, Yvette? In fact, when you look at the mission statement and core beliefs of the district, which is Board of Education Policy 0000, you'll see that since the late 1990s, the Board of Education District has placed a premium on respecting and embracing diversity. On the next slide, I can share with you, these are some of the things that we've done to live our vision. Kindness and respect toward all, K5. That's our approach. That's how we approach everything that we do. Our work in Esteam has put empathy at the cornerstone, at the foundation of the work we do. Each school has an acronym that they use to remind students of the expected behaviors. It's Heart at Crampon, Bark at Brookside, and Best at Mohansick. Our curricula are aligned to the New York State standards, and of course, DASSA, the Dignity for All Students Act, exists, K5, it exists at all grade levels. On the next slide, in the middle school, again, I won't read the slide to you, but there are some very, very important steps that are done, and we really appreciate all of the work that our middle school has invested in a really robust character education program. The middle school was our first school district, school of character, both at the state and national level. And then on the next slide, in grades nine through 12, there are some additional steps there that are happening. There are, I, I just want to note, there are objective and factual conversations on current events that do come up in a high school social studies class. And I think our teachers navigate that, and my hat's off to our teachers who navigate those conversations with such skill and such precision. I, I truly admire the work that they do every day. And then I do want to acknowledge on the next slide, there are some documents that were released by the state. There are two specific documents. The first was in 2018. The second was in May of 2021. I've heard support and I've heard concern within our school community on these documents. I've heard support and I've heard concern about the implications of these two documents on schools. The support, the concern, I acknowledge, I recognize that there are multiple perspectives on this topic, and I think we all do. Yorktown will always do things thoughtfully, sometimes differently than most school districts. We haven't made a determination on how this will fit into our work moving forward. There are a few steps that need to happen before we can get there, and I don't want to step prematurely. So this is important work. In terms of these documents, I've reviewed them. Our members of my leadership team have begun the review as well, and we're going through. And we haven't made a determination, so I'm not here to recommend to you which parts of this document we'll accept, if any. That's, and that's where we are. But I do trust that, you know, Yorktown will be very thoughtful in everything that we do, and I think we've demonstrated that. With regard to next steps, and this is my final slide for this evening's presentation. I talked to you about the first part of our work, the first stage of our work, which was working together as a task force. 18 members of our school district coming together, have honest and open conversations, analyze our existing practices, look at areas of priority, and now we talk about how. How does this look? We're proud of what we already do. We had a consultant who worked with us at the start of this work who facilitated the honest and open conversations to help us remember that everyone's coming to the table with good intentions, and everyone's coming to the table with the best interests of children first and foremost. In terms of next steps, the next step beyond that first step where we've really come to understand a lot of our existing practices and celebrate some of the great things we're doing and, and look at our school libraries and classroom libraries, next step now is to hear from our community. And that's an important next step in this work. So what will happen is a small leadership team in our district will get feedback in one of two ways. We're going to, and I will put out an email next week. Please don't send me an email with asking for the directions on how to participate because I assure you that we'll put something out next week with clear steps on how to participate. You can elect to have an in-person meeting with us and, and really engage in a, a nice, meaningful conversation. You can submit a form electronically on our website. We'll have something onto our website, I'm hoping as early as next week. I don't want to put a timeframe just to, to members of our board. I really don't want to put a timeframe on it because this will be driven by how many responses we get. So while I'd love to tell you that I'll have something after the holidays, because for all intents and purposes, October is in our rearview mirror, and we're looking ahead to November, but a lot will be determined by the number of responses we receive for the in-person. So if more people choose the digital approach and fill out a form online, okay, we can analyze that quickly. But if we have 400 people who would like to schedule time to meet, we're going to meet with you. If we have 40 people who schedule time to meet, we'll meet with them. Obviously, 400 people will take longer to process than 40 people to process. So that's the next step. We want to hear from our community. We want to hear your perspective, and we welcome all perspectives in this work. So whatever your opinion is, we'd like to hear from you. There will be information that comes out in a letter from me next week, letting you know how to share your perspective. You'll have the option. If you'd like to schedule a time, I, in terms of the meetings, what I'm asking for is that it be members of our school community who have that meeting with us in person, online, on the digital forum. That will be available publicly on our website, but for the meetings, we'd like to make sure that we meet with our school community and hear our perspectives and hear the perspectives. Again, that much of this is going to be driven on how many people register to have the in-person meetings. And they'll be, it'll be in small groups. It will not be one-on-one meetings. It will be small group meetings, but more information to come. So moving forward, what I want to share for our board is my hope is that over the next two months, I can gather a perspective from the community. From there, I'd like to report back to you once I'm ready to do so and once I've been able to synthesize the information. In the interim, we also want faculty engagement as well. I'd love to hear student voice as well in, in the upper grades, students who have been through our school system. If they're interested in, in sharing their perspective, that would be helpful as well. The building-level character education teams, those will continue to meet. That work doesn't end. We're still looking at all of our practices, making sure that we're as responsive, respectful, and sensitive to all members of our student community. But I wanted to provide you with that update. I'm happy to take any questions that the board has at this time, but that's essentially the update. I wanted to outline the next steps, which is community engagement.
Thank you. Before I bring it to the board for questions, I see people who have masks that are not on. They must be on and cover your nose and your mouth. Thank you. Lisa, did you have a question?
I do, thank you. Thanks, Dr. Hatta, for that report. You mentioned that there were 18 members of the task force. Who are they and how were they chosen?
Yes, thank you for that. I'm sorry that I didn't mention that in the presentation. There were 18 members on the task force. To start the task force, I had sent out an email. Actually, I sent out an email with two committees. It was the reopening committee at the time, and it was the Cultural Awareness and Equity Task Force. Anyone who responded to express interest was selected to the task force. So if we had some stu, uh, some faculty and staff who exceeded that, they were given the option to go onto the building task force, which, which most took. But we were able to accommodate just about everyone who expressed interest.
And when you said-
And it's faculty and staff in all five of our schools.
Right. So the email was sent to, to everybody on the-
Every employee in the district received that email.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
Rashmi?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear on a few things. This is still the beginning of the work?
Yes, absolutely. There haven't been the curricular changes that, that I'm hearing about. There ha, we're not at that point. We're, we're not at that point at this time. Where we were is we understood where we were. We took inventory of where we were. We had some other really meaningful discussions, and now we're at the information gathering phase from our community. So that's where we are.
Okay. And the work is going to continue. It will just, it's, it's, it's an ongoing process, and it's probably never going to stop. Is that correct?
It's an ongoing process, absolutely. And the next step in continuing the work is hearing the feedback of our community.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I want to thank the entire task force for their hard work. These tough discussions, I know, could not have been easy. So I'm grateful you had a facilitator, and I'm so grateful that our staff was willing to open themselves up and be part of this task force because that, that had to be difficult work. So I thank you all for that. Is that everything?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight.
Okay. We're going to go on to board reports. Cheryl, Policy Committee?
Sure. We last met on October 15th, and we're doing an extensive redo, review of the Code of Conduct. So that will take a couple of meetings. We're next meeting on November 30th, and we'll have more to report at that point.
Thank you. Rashmi, the audit?
So it's been a busy time for the Audit Committee this time of the year. We had several meetings in September. We also met a couple of weeks ago, and then tonight we heard from the external auditor. This week, our internal auditor will be on site to start off their field's work. Thank you to Tom, Cole, Alicia. Your work has been really stellar, so thank you for everything. And also the Audit Committee, Lisa Ruhl, Peter Visaccia, they've been really helpful. That's all.
Thank you. Mike, Fiscal Advisor?
Aside from some work with contract negotiations, the Fiscal Advisory Committee kicks into gear as we get into budget season, so we'll be meeting shortly to discuss upcoming changes to the budget.
Okay. And as far as steering goes, we're still working with their contractors to finish closing out the final items in the gym and their punch list. And we also met last week to start to review the summer 2022 work, which is including air conditioning in the large spaces and a few other items. So we're trying to get that out on the streets so we can get the bids in because we're understanding that there could be supply chain issues, so we want to make sure that we've secured stuff early enough that we can actually get our work done. So those are the end of the committee updates. We're going to go on to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the September 27th and the October 4th, 2021 board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the external auditors' report and management response letter?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the Treasurers' reports for June, July, no, July, August, and September of 21? And the approval of these reports is contingent upon board acceptance of the fiscal year 2021 financial statements?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the Claims Audit Report for September 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the extra classroom reports for July, August, and September of 2021, and their approval is contingent again on the auditors' report?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We have a resolution here. I'm just going to read the beginning of it. Whereas the Lakeland Central School District has requested that one student from Lakeland High School be permitted to participate, New York Town High School Ski Team is a separate ski team under the shadowing rules of Section 1. And a New York State Public High School Athletic Association, New York Town Central School District wishes to permit such participation, and it just goes on.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Personnel, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the payout of up to three additional unused vacation days for employee number 2458 upon retirement.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. This is a long one. Certified personnel, we have appointments, part-time and temporary appointments. We have our extra credits. I've got to get down to the end of it. We have extra duty. I'm sorry. Corrections, in addition to the substitute list, a teaching assistant change in hours. We have coaches and co-curriculars, volunteers that are resignation for the purpose of retirement, and another resignation under classified personnel. We have appointments to civil service and additions to the substitute list.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Budget transfers. Can I have a motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? CARES Act, no, my thing is freezing. A motion to approve the increase in the 2021-22 budget by $6,668.04 to establish the budget for the CARES Act grant expenditures. Revenue offset will be in the E S S E R and the G E R funding established by the CARES Act.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Tom, can you just explain that?
These are the federal monies and state monies that have been provided to school districts for COVID relief, and this is the mechanism that we have to use in order to spend the money.
Okay. So we're not increasing the budget by-
No, we're not. We're only increasing it for this specific purpose. It won't be used as an increase basis moving forward, have no impact on taxes either this year or in the future.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Funding resolutions, a motion to approve the funding resolutions as listed below in items one to three. The final funding of the 21-22 Tax Cert Reserve Fund, the final funding of the ERS Reserve Fund, and the final funding of the TRS Reserve Fund.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Change order, a motion to accept the following change order from AG Electric for the summer 2021 district-wide improvements.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? I have PIPs, a motion to approve the following York Town Congress of Teachers Professional Improvement Program proposals as listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? A motion to approve the following placements as of October 25th, 2021?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We're up to board comments. Mike?
None at this time, thanks.
Rashmi?
I'm good, thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thank you.
Lisa?
I'm good, thanks.
All right. I am too. We are going to go on to our second public comment. I am going to read what I read before so everybody is clear. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. Speakers were asked to sign up on the appropriate signup sheet with their full name, address, and email. If your name is not legible or readable, you will not be called upon. Our Public Policy 1230, participation, public participation at board meetings clearly states we do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or other disruptions from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and toward the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to abide by the three-minute speaking time, we will turn off the microphone. Our second public comment period is 30 minutes in length. Each person has the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. The board may choose to extend this public comment period by a majority vote. So I will be calling Carolyn Lieberman?
I'm an alumnus of the York Town Central School District. I graduated from this high school in 2008. I received a great education and have an overall excellent experience here. I've since completed bachelor's and- I've since completed bachelor's and master's degrees and now work full-time as a therapist. I work with teens and adults with severe mental health issues, most of which stem from trauma and abuse. I love my job, but my education here, great as it was, did not prepare me for it. I left here with no real understanding of diversity and inclusion, no real knowledge of how to support and help the real and valuable people that I work with every day. I wasn't taught how to support the 60-year-old black woman who tried to kill herself because she was physically forced to have an abortion as a teen, something her strong religious beliefs told her was unforgivable. In spite of the decades she worked saving lives as a nurse and the three healthy children she raised, she couldn't reconcile what she had done. And I couldn't understand her perspective or how to help her. I never learned about her world. I wasn't taught about the non-binary person raised in the deep south who, as a child, had two dresses to their name, one for church and one for school. Their father beat them severely one morning in front of the whole congregation because they were climbing trees with the neighborhood boys. Their family couldn't afford a new dress if that one got ruined, and it isn't proper for good girls to play like that. I never learned about their world. I wasn't taught about the young Guatemalan man who immigrated here legally at 16 so that he could work to support his family who couldn't afford care for his brother with cerebral palsy. He came here knowing no English and started two jobs and school, barely having money to eat or time to sleep, and blamed himself when, after two years of this, he broke down. I never learned about his world. I share these stories because more students of the Yorktown School District will become therapists and will need to be able to understand and support their clients if they want to be successful and have these clients return for more appointments. Students of the Yorktown School District will become doctors who will need to know how to safely prescribe medications for their transgender patient on HRT if they want continued business. Students of the Yorktown School District will become teachers who will need to understand how to effectively work with kids with trauma, learning disabilities, so that they can help them grow into successful adults. The students of Yorktown School District need diversity education. Not only does their decency as human beings depend on it, but so do their future careers. Thank you.
Thank you. N B?
Okay. First, I want to thank Dr. Hatter for all his hard work. Through the years, we may not have always agreed, but I respect the fact that he stays neutral. And many educators could learn from him, including one specific guidance counselor. I am here tonight because I am concerned as to why non-residents, many here tonight, are permitted to speak at our Board of Ed meetings, preventing tax-paying stakeholders from speaking. I inquired with Dr. Hatter, who provided me with guidance from New York State Committee on open government that Yorktown Board of Ed is using as guidance. This is not a law as we are being told. I reviewed the document, which specifically states, "We are unaware of any provision in the education law or upon open meetings law pertaining to community forum meetings." This is guidance only. So there is no actual law or ruling relating to not allowing non-residents to speak. This is an opinion-based document only. I would like to point out that if the Board of Ed is using this document as their guidance, then in all fairness, they need to abide by all aspects of this document. Specifically, the Board of Ed President should no longer shamefully be permitted to require speakers to identify themselves by name at the podium, nor shall they forbid the names of school district employees from being said. The guidance specifically states that public entities cannot require a speaker to identify themselves by name, residence, or interest. In addition, according to federal court decisions, specifically Schulov v. Murphy, the guidance states, "We note that there are federal court decisions indicating that commentary is permitted within certain subject area. Negative commentary in the same area cannot be prohibited." I recommend that the Board of Ed find and adopt the guidelines that Lakeland School District follows, which only allows residents to speak. But if they do not, then in order to protect tax-paying stakeholders who elect this Board, I make the following recommendation that will abide by the guidance that Yorktown Board of Ed is choosing to adhere to. I recommend that the Board transition to a deli counter numbering system, giving tax-paying residents priority, and a letter system for non-residents as secondary. This will prevent speakers from having to publicly identify themselves, but also give priority to tax-paying stakeholders to speak. I also highly recommend that the Board of Ed remove any prohibition regarding commentary that violates federally protected First Amendment rights off the website immediately, specifically prohibiting stating a school employee's name. And just so I have, since I have a little extra time, it does not sound like any parents are going to be put on the D E I team. I believe Lakeland has parents on the D E I team. I believe Putnam Valley has 40 parents on the D E I team. And I highly recommend that parents be placed on that D E I team. I've reviewed the entire CRS framework. There's a lot of good information in there, but there's also a lot of concerning information that is similar to critical race theory, which I think that parents need to have involvement.
Please finish up.
And if it's my understanding, there is a member on the task force that is part, is an activist and has, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that people continue to keep their masks completely on their faces. Tom Maron?
As you said, my name is Tom Maron. I'm a parent in our community and an educator. Let me begin by saying, as I've said here in the past, I'm a fan of Yorktown Central School District. Like many other families, we looked at school districts when we searched for a town to call our own. When we saw that Yorktown maintains vibrant music and arts education programs, we knew that everything else would be funded and that this is where we wanted to ground our family. Still, I'm here tonight to congratulate the school district on something, on a somewhat different matter. Across the country, it seems, school board meetings like this one have become battlegrounds for those who would have us turn our backs on educating our children, not Yorktown Central Schools. Here, we have a board and a faculty who understand that we have to teach all the history, not just the shiny parts. The efforts to bring diverse and inclusive education to our schools should be commended. And the professionalism and courtesy with which you have listened to even some rude remarks is a credit to you. Our children will become better adults and better citizens for all that you do here. Thank you.
Thank you. George Price?
Good evening. I came here, I didn't know what I was going to say. The diversity issue shouldn't be an issue. I wasn't educated in Yorktown. I was educated in New York City School District. For a kid like me, African-American, history books don't do us justice. Right now, in Texas, they're trying to take slavery out of school books. What happened in the past in this nation is in the past, but it still needs to be explained. All right? The Holocaust is explained. Pearl Harbor is explained. Then the encampment of Asian people during World Wars was explained. But a lot of things are not explained. A lot of people don't get credit for things that they did helped and did for this nation. Learning the truth is the truth. We have the internet now. Kids go online all day long and look up things. The fake news and all the stop and all the rhetoric that is being put out there needs to be stopped. And the school district can do something about that. The inclusion of everybody helps everybody, helps this nation, this nation that was supposedly a melting pot, where everybody came here for the sidewalks of gold. All right? And I understand that some people come from other countries and things were harsh and things were bad and the government were bad. It's not here. We have politicians, yes. They lie, yes. They cheat, yes. But they're not going to take over your life. It's not going to come to a communist state or country. All right? As a minority in this community, I want my kids to learn everything. I want them to learn about my history, about the contributions of African-Americans, Puerto Ricans, Asians, Indian, Native American, the inclusion of it all, what everybody did. It doesn't belittle anybody and it doesn't make anybody's ethnicity seem smaller or bigger. It's just the truth. Kids can handle the truth. They are not going to break. They are not going to be fragile. This little pond in Yorktown is a pond. And when they leave here, they go out into the big world, into the big ocean. And if you do not equip them to deal with minorities and people of other ethnicities, they will be held back.
Please finish up.
I'm sorry. All right? They will be held back. And I do not want to see any kid, mine alone or anybody's here, to be held back because
Thank you.
we can't speak the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Beloff-Davis. Oh, I'm sorry, no, Anika. Anika is first. Yeah.
Good evening, Dr. Hatter and members of the Board of Ed. My name is Anika Beloff-Davis. I'm nervous to be speaking, but I wanted to share my experience in Yorktown schools. I moved to Yorktown in second grade from Seton in August of 2017. I had a brain injury. Since I couldn't start school on time, I received tutor every day for almost two months. My tutor was a second-grade teacher at Mohansick. When I was okay to go back to school, I asked my parents if they could ask the school if I could have her as my teacher. I felt comfortable with her and was learning. I formed a relationship with her and she made me feel confident. My parents tried so hard to put me into her class, but the principal and superintendent agreed that they were not going to change my teacher. I was so sad. I had a lot of anxiety, especially since my new teacher told the whole class about my injury. Kids I didn't even know asked me how come I wasn't bald. Being in the class gave me stress and anxiety, but no one seemed to care except my parents. I started to feel like the school didn't care about me or care if I succeeded. My parents fought hard to try and get me the support I needed, but the school didn't do what my doctors recommended. My parents have tried to help me get the support I need, but nothing seems to change ever since second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. I know a brain injury is a very serious injury. And to do, to this day, I do not understand why the school didn't help me. Every year seemed to get worse between the teachers and the staff. All the meetings my parents had with the Special Education Committee, they didn't help me either. I wanted to share my story because no child should go through what I went through. Bullying exists here in Yorktown schools, and I'm here to tell you that it is a big problem and that it comes more from teachers and staff. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Holly Davis?
Hi, yes. I wasn't going to speak today, but I felt compelled by some of the people that spoke here, saying a lot of bullying exists. That's what I heard. I want to explain to you what my son went through in second grade. He was talked about slavery, which I know we should talk about. We should always remember what we did in our past. But not just black and brown slavery. There was a lot of Irish, Jewish slavery. There was a lot of things that went on. And in second grade, he did not concept the fact. It took his innocence from him because he doesn't look at color. He looks at his friends. He looks at his peers. He loves everyone. We teach respect, kindness for everybody. And that turned spiraled into a whole downward spiral for him. And he actually asked if his life mattered. My seven-year-old son asked if his life mattered. That is not acceptable to me on any level. And then, so we went through a conversation with the slavery because they did a discussion and a lesson. Memorial Day comes. There's no discussion in lesson. There's no book that's going to be taught. My son didn't learn anything. He learned from me, but he didn't learn from the teacher. When I reached out to the teacher and expressed my concern because it's a big problem, her response was that we have to be sensitive to our peers. I thought we lived in America, and to me, that's unacceptable. So I just felt compelled to share the story that comes from the other side, that needs to be talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor Griffiths?
Hello, as mentioned, my name is Trevor Griffiths. I'm a senior here at YHS. I'd like to start by thanking Dr. Hatter and the Board for their continuous support and commitment to the principles of D E I. It's so important for, at any age, a student to feel comfortable with who they are, especially when it's something beyond their control, such as race, ethnicity, gender, or sexual orientation. The fact that this community is beginning to adopt these practices means the world to so many students here at YHS and across the entire district. When you break down D E I, it's diversity, equity, and inclusion. These are three principles that are not up for debate and they cannot be argued. These are empathy. These are the entire principles of what our district stands for. I remember when Dr. Hatter first arrived here, the big thing was coining the E for empathy, and I thought that was a really excellent idea. I think now is our chance to back that up, to show how we are supporting our students with empathy and how we could be empathetic towards students who are minorities and are parts of these discriminated against groups. D E I is empathy. D E I is a promise that all of you made years ago. And I'd like to thank you for living up to that promise, and I hope you continue to live up to that promise in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula?
With a D.
I'm sorry, it's your handwriting I can't read. I apologize.
Sorry, it's my whole life it's been like that. It's Paula DeRosa Yocut.
With a D.
Paula D.
Paula D, that's right. When I was teaching, that was, that's what I was called. What's that? Okay, well, I'm a tax-paying member of this community. I have three children in this district. I have a senior who's now sleeping because she's just done all of her college applications and she's exhausted. And I have twins who are in the eighth grade right now. Some of you may know me in the community, some of you may not. Sometimes I wear hijab, sometimes I wear a baseball hat, sort of just depends on how I feel. I wanted to share with you my daughter's college essay, if I may. At first glance, I'm a regular student. I have white skin, long curly hair, and an athletic build. Not many people would see me and automatically assume that I am Muslim. I often feel as though I walk around with an invisible mask, one that cannot be seen but is always present. It is the mask of the majority of which I am not a member. I am a Muslim. I do not cover my hair. And to be clear, my particular mask is effective in the face of ignorance only. Many do not realize that being a Muslim and white is not mutually exclusive, nor are they aware that many Muslim women choose not to cover their hair. I find myself enduring two levels of ignorance. One is Islamophobia, and the second, not realizing that I might happen to be Muslim. Consequently, some of my classmates have hurled their anti-Muslim insults in my presence. This is when my mask fails me, for as though it may shield me, as, sorry. For though it might shield my identity, it does not protect me from the pain caused by their comments. These experiences leave me with hard-to-explain feelings even to myself. At first, I am grateful that I am not seen as a Muslim, but just as quickly, I feel guilty. The thing is, after telling the offending classmates that I happen to be Muslim, their hollow apologies ring out. They are hollow because though they feel bad for making the comments in front of me, they are not always sorry for saying such things at all. I'm not going to read the rest of it, but my other experience has been my blond-haired, blue-eyed Muslim boy was told by a middle school teacher a few years ago, before COVID, that he was not Muslim because his name is Christian. His name is Zachariah. Zachariah. He is Christian. He is Muslim. He's not Christian. Separation of church and state, we shouldn't be telling our kids what religion they are in our classrooms. I was born a Christian. I worked for the, a Jewish organization for 20 years. I chose to become Muslim. I was raised in northern Maine in a very white community. The Catholics were ostracized. There's no Catholic churches in my town. Three white, three Methodist churches and one conservative, and those were not okay. Catholics had to go to the next town. My great-grandparents, both white, one English, one French, were ostracized and not allowed to marry each other. The racism in this country has to stop. We have to teach our kids. We have to teach our kids that people are people not based on the color of their skin. This is a girl who has been in this school district since fifth grade, since fifth grade, and she's now a graduating senior. She wants to become a psychiatrist.
Please wrap up.
She wants to become a psychiatrist, and I commend her for that. I can only hope that she's more prepared than the young woman back there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura Capel, and I'm going to ask that the audience does not shout out. I am doing my best to make sure that I can read everybody's names so you all have a fair chance to speak.
Good evening. My name is Laura Capel. I had three children go through this school district, K to 12. I fully support the diversity, equity, inclusion efforts that you are working towards in this town, and I am going to share with you, as Paula did, the words of my daughter, a class of 2011 Yorktown High School. As a K to 12 graduate of Yorktown who went through the public schools here, I am grateful overall for the wonderful education I received. I studied hard, got good grades, made lifelong friends, and got into my dream university. Upon reflection now that I'm 28, I know there is room for improvement in the public schools in Yorktown in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I believe that most of our teachers sincerely did the best they could with the education and tools they had to make students feel included. However, I know that many of my friends who are minorities often felt singled out and excluded by the curriculum. Our education focused mostly on the history of the United States. Only two years were devoted to world history, where the teachers attempted to squeeze in the history of every major country outside the U.S. and Western Europe. Additionally, our world religion unit was far too short. As a Jewish student, I often felt that I was supposed to be the spokesperson for my whole culture. Teachers would call on me during our world religion class or any time there was a major Jewish holiday and ask me to explain my culture to the class. It made me feel very self-conscious and called out. Even our curriculum for U.S. history was lacking in modern-day diversity and inclusion. Our social studies did cover major topics such as the history of slavery, the Civil War, the Trail of Tears, Japanese internment camps, racist anti-immigration policies, segregation, and Martin Luther King Jr. However, I think we could have done more to cover after Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated, include more, to include more civil rights leaders besides him. We also learned nothing about systemic racism and modern-day forms of discrimination that still exists. The perspectives with which we were taught, certain topics should be reexamined. For example, I feel that we were led to believe that all major inequality issues have been solved, and everyone in the U.S. was treated equally, which is factually incorrect. A final example is that when we learned about the Ku Klux Klan in the South, we never learned about Black Wall Street or the Tulsa massacre of 1921, which, again, I had to learn about as an adult. Teachers should be trained in how to provide curriculum that covers the history of the world and U.S. through a more inclusive lens, and should be provided DEI resources to continue their education on how to teach students with less bias. And I just want to say I agree with her, and thank you very much. She loved her education, and she did very well for herself, but we can always do better, and I applaud your efforts to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mel Tansman?
Good evening. I'm Melvin Tansman. I have been a Yorktown resident for over 30 years. As the father of two African-American adult children, I applaud the Board of Education and the Superintendent for moving forward with the DEI initiative for Yorktown schools. I ask that the district continue to work in an expeditious manner to enact the DEI plan in accordance with the region's DEI framework. I also commend the Board for its procedures to not allow hate speech and attacks during public comments. We have seen appalling behavior by some opponents in a neighboring school district. Once again, I thank you for creating an environment where all views can be heard in a civil manner. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. We're approaching 30 minutes. Do we want to extend public comment? So, can I have a motion to extend public comment?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, we're going to extend it for another 30 minutes. I think then we should get through it all, hopefully. Susan Cody?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak and address this most vital and challenging issue. My name is Susan Cody. I'm here representing Race Amity of Northern Westchester in Putnam. As our name suggests, we are about creating amity, friendship, between all of the members, all of the diverse members of the human family. We often refer to race amity as the other tradition because the members, because the existence and history of races in America gets nearly all the press. But friendship and cooperation between the many diverse members of the human family, and we do believe we are all members of the same family, a truth that science, all the sciences, support. As I said, cooperation, friendship, and mutual support have a history as long as racism, sexism, and all of the other forms of othering. So, in keeping with that tradition and our national motto, e pluribus unum, out of many one, I want to assure you that this organization, Race Amity of Northern Westchester in Putnam, applauds and supports every effort to infuse our school curricula and atmosphere with that which welcomes students and staff from every branch of our family. You may have noticed I'm a white lady. I cannot tell you how much my life has been, in fact, I'm an old white lady. So, I cannot tell you how much my life has been enriched by my close and loving association with the diverse spectrum of humanity and from learning as much as I can about our history. This is an ongoing process. I believe this will be true for our students, no matter their gender identity, physical power or limitations, or religion. I believe that this will, or, I'm sorry, or how much little or as much, or, let me try this again, how much, or how much, or how little melanin they have in their skin. I would like to close with a quote from the great religious leader Abdul Baha. "The diversity of the human family should be the cause of love and harmony, as it is in music, where many different notes blend together in the making of a perfect chord. When you meet those of a different race and color from yourself, do not mistrust them and draw yourself into your shell of conventionality, but rather be glad and show them kindness. Think of them as different colored roses in the beautiful garden of humanity."
Please wrap up.
"And rejoice to be among them." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lynette Waterhouse?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Hatter, for your informative presentation. As the mother of a student who graduated from Yorktown Schools many years ago, Yorktown gave him a very good education. However, it isn't until recently have I realized how divisive this district has become because of varying viewpoints. At the time that he attended schools here, everyone was a family, whether it was through arts, whether it was through sports, whether it was through parent volunteering. I am very dismayed to hear some of the requests that we follow the state guidelines for DEI, whether it's an offshoot from CRT, which has Marxist roots, DEI, and based on what I've seen in the state documents, foster a belief that there is white privilege, that there is implicit bias, and this is something that is being taught to our children. It only makes one group pit itself against another. All groups should be acceptable. All children are entitled to a quality education. The bar needs to be set high for all of our children so that they are able to compete in this equally diverse world, not feeling that one is more privileged than another, which is not true. Privilege can exist and not exist. It is all a matter of how you look at it. I am hoping that when the district does consider what the state has brought down, that some of those things that are included in that document do not come to fruition in this district. It will only serve to divide more, create more hard feelings. And when we talk about cultural awareness, it should include all groups. As a former educator, I know that as a white woman, I always were taught, in a minority district, to educate myself, to bring to my children all that they needed in order to succeed. If I did not have a high bar for them, whether it is in history, math, science, any other language that they chose to take, any language that they came into class with to learn English, then I was not succeeding, and my goal was to have them succeed. All cultures need to be respected. Are you aware that even for Italian-Americans, there were camps, not just Japanese-Americans during World War II? My family was in there. Are you aware that there was a lynching of over 10 Italian-Americans back in the early 1900s? And I never saw that in a history book. So, when we talk about implementing such a program, how will we possibly reach all cultures? I think the foremost thing that needs to be done is we start out on the right foot, where children are taught respect at home, so that they learn that everyone, no matter what their color, their background, is to be respected.
Please wrap up.
And then, hopefully, it makes the job of the schools easier and brings respect there.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, no clapping. Thank you. Judith Stavens? I'm going to ask not to have the audience shout out.
Hello. I'm Judith Stavens. I've been in Yorktown 25 years. My son attended this district, K through 12, and it certainly did well by him, so very much appreciated. We have very strong affinities here. Thank you so much for providing the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Dr. Hatter, and the Board, and the task force. None of this is easy. None of this is simple. It requires lots and lots of hard work, and we greatly appreciate that, and the civility, and the listening to all comers. When it comes to setting direction for our schools, I think that everyone can agree that we want the focus to be on the children. How can we provide the very best education for each and every child? What skills do we want them to have? How can we best prepare each of them for their lives after they leave our schools? I know this is, these are guiding words for all of you. Over the last year and a half, students, alumni, and parents, and even tonight, have bravely shared their stories about impediments to achieving these goals, including some traumatic experiences. It is clear that adjustments need to be made in order for every child to feel safe and comfortable in their school, on their bus, in their community. And by every, I mean Jewish kids, kids of color, LGBTQ kids of every kind, immigrant kids, kids with varied physical abilities, Muslim kids, and, yes, white kids, every single kid. And again, I think that's guiding you. Please don't take this to mean that we shouldn't emphasize fact-based learning. As we explore our country's history, we are compelled to provide our students with the truth. Anything but truth does our students a disservice, both during their school years and as they mature and become adults. Quality professional educators, such as the wonderful teachers right here in our district, must provide the age-appropriate critical skills to evaluate the context of historical events. A critical part of creating a fostering environment for diverse children is to develop a diverse staff. I hope that the Board is exploring best practices for reaching such a goal. As you may have heard, Business Two has been working on finding ways to make each employee feel safe and valued. Companies implementing successful DEI programs are seeing the benefits reflected in their bottom lines, which certainly incentivizes more companies to do the same. This is the world that our children will be joining, and it is the Board's job to ensure that they are prepared for it. And again, I believe you're addressing that. I strongly support the work that the district has undertaken and look forward to hearing more regular updates on the progress. We have no time to lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Peckman?
Hi, I'm Patricia Peckham. I live in Yorktown. I have been living here for almost 20 years. I have two mixed-race children that graduated here 10 years ago or so. And a lot of what I intended to say was already well said by a variety of speakers, but I did want to, I was thinking about the fact that our school system needs to help teach our young adults to survive and do more than survive, prepare them for the future in a global world. And the global world is diverse, and the global world, our kids are going to be out there meeting many different people, having to have an education that includes learning about different cultures and really embracing the diversity of life is, I think, really important, and it's something that school can do through this framework of the New York State Cultural Awareness and DEI framework. I'm probably using the words wrong. The other point I wanted to make was to thank the School Board for really working forward on this, to including the community gathering their information, and I will have what I want to say more prepared and write you the email. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob Wingate?
Thank you. I'm Rob Wingate. I'm the former executive director of a healthcare workforce organization that has conducted a good bit of training on the topic of trauma-informed care, working in partnership with organizations like Westchester Medical Center and the County Department of Community Mental Health. I do live in Tarrytown, but I've worked in a regional setting in health provider training, and especially with school health professionals. So, I just wanted to step forward briefly to say thank you to the Board here, certainly. This is my third meeting sort of attending and watching, and partly because of the kinds of polarization that we've been seeing in lots of different school districts, but certainly just at a regional perspective to say thank you for the time and effort that you as administrators and Board members put in to try to navigate these waters, which are pretty challenging and draining. An observation I have just quickly is that, you know, again, like, tonight's been an easier meeting to watch, if simply because we've had two students in the room, and there seems to be more effort sort of taking place amongst us all here, as Westchester County residents, you know, as well as Yorktown residents, to understand that, like, what gets said in this room and in any other board meeting around the county can have mental health impacts on students and children who are choosing to be here but with their parents. So, some of the training work that I've done, which I would, and some organizations you could look at for supports in this area, at a technical level, and your health professionals may know of this already, are the New York State Center for School Health, which may have training information about dealing with trauma needs of young people. There's also an after-school association or an after-school program association called the New York State Network for Youth Success, which has materials and training assets, if you will, on social, emotional learning, which is, you know, a part of the concerns we all have and the challenges we all have right now. There is a trauma coalition that operates out of There is a trauma coalition that operates out of Westchester library system. They might also have some information. And it seems to me like what's sort of like consistent across all of the challenges we're facing here is this question of what kind of trauma children face. And both students tonight talked like at some level about situations they have seen that relate to trauma and how they process it in their families, and the school district, which is such a challenge. So these are some of the resources that I've found to be useful in training school health professionals, school nurses, psychologists, social workers. And, you know, I do support diversity education, but with the understanding, obviously, that, you know, I was interested to hear actually about the information on like the Italian experience, like I didn't know some of those things also. So, you know, it's like this kind of listening is valuable, and I find it hard to like suspend some of the, you know, my own preconceptions, but I appreciate that this board has like been able to help do that, I think, in the community. And maybe to like help us understand how to set some of those standards for other districts in the county where this polarization is also present.
Please wrap up.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim McCain. I live here in Yorktown. In his play No Exit, Jean-Paul Sartre says that hell is other people. Hell is other people. From the day we are born, our sense of ourselves is shaped by the world around us, by our parents, our family, our neighbors, by our fellow students at school, by their parents, and by our teachers. Hell does not have to be other people. We are the other people, and we cannot escape the enormous responsibility that goes with that. It is up to us, all of us, to ensure that every single member of our community, but most particularly the children, are afforded the respect that each is entitled to. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Merrill Frank? And I'm going to ask everybody, let's not shout out, let's not laugh, let's keep it quiet in here for everybody. Thank you. No, sir, you need to keep your mask on.
Oh, sorry. Evening. My name is Merrill Frank, class of 1979, grew up here, attended Yorktown schools. Teachers inculcated with us basic civic values going back to grade school. Give you an example, fifth grade teacher, pretty much every day said, "Go home, read the paper, we'll discuss it the next day." Pete Gill, Evening Star, had clips from the AP, Washington Post, et cetera. Next day, we discussed Attica. No holds barred, everything that went on then. Threw into high school, took comparative religion, Regents history. We had something called Mock Congress, where I had to, where you all had to play a congress member or senator. I had to play John Stennis, who was a Dixiecrat from Mississippi. It helped me to put my feet into someone else's shoes, so to speak. We also read some of the great authors, some might be quite controversial to this day, Dick Gregory, name of his autobiography I can't mention here because it might be ripped out of context. But even with all that, there were gaps that needed to be filled. We discussed slavery. When it came to Reconstruction, it was kind of thin there. Some Jim Crow, civil rights, et cetera. Tulsa, not much on that. Japanese internment, a bit. The Italian part, hmm, not so much. So I'm just here to speak up why this is important. You need to just make a nice broad history and inclusive inclusion curriculum. You'll all benefit from it. Thankfully, I caught up, you know, later in life, read a lot more history, graduated with two college degrees, including one in public administration. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rianna Navin. I have three children, a 15-year-old and two 11-year-olds. I would like to spear, thank the superintendent and the board, the task force for all their hard work in general, and especially around the DEI efforts and its implementation. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. As you might be able to tell by my accent, I'm originally from Germany. The history of my native country is obviously a difficult one, and so is my personal history. I am a descendant of Nazis. When my mother was born in 1943, two years before the end of World War II, her father was in Italy. He was an interpreter for the German armed forces. He took part in interrogations of partisans and American and British prisoners of war, who then went on to be executed. In the years before my mother's birth, both he and my, his wife, my grandmother, worked as translators at the Gestapo headquarters, where they translated the foreign press. This means they were privy to the persecution of Jews at the full extent of it, much, much sooner than the general German population was. After the war ended, my grandfather was detained as a war criminal by the British Army. But my grandmother went on to work for the British Army as an interpreter and somehow managed to have my grandfather released after only one year of detainment. Neither of them ever faced any consequences for their actions or their complicity. I am also a descendant of a victim of the Nazis, as my great-grandmother was euthanized by them from mental illness. Growing up in Germany, my peers and I were taught about the Holocaust many times throughout our education, always in completely age-appropriate ways. I don't feel ashamed of my country's history because I know I am not to blame. Instead, I feel empowered. I feel empowered because I was given the knowledge about my roots, and with that knowledge, the tools to become a more compassionate person. I am proud of how Germany has addressed its history head-on. And now, as a proud American, I know that we are strong enough as a country and evolved enough as a people to acknowledge and share with our children even the darker chapters of our history. Again, not to place blame, but to create well-rounded and fully informed compassionate human beings. The future, I believe, of any democracy depends on our understanding of our past. I strongly believe that it is essential that our children understand the roots of racism and recognize the injustices that still exist today. I hope you will continue the good work that you have done on the Equity Task Force and move swiftly to implement the needed changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Higgins. I'm the father of an incoming kindergartner, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and to thank you for your work on DEI, of which I'm a very strong supporter. I think that while we all like to think that we are good people, and we are, we have unconscious biases, and we transmit those biases to our children, and I believe that school is a way of balancing that, of giving a different, hopefully more objective, perspective on matters. Corporate America is entirely on board with this now. I work for a large public company, and we have a very significant DEI initiative for the same reason. We believe that we're a better, stronger company if we have a diverse population working for us, and if that population is, and this is very important, is included at all levels in decision-making. We had a recent example of what happens if you don't have DEI in the public domain. John Gruden, the head coach of the Las Vegas Raiders, had to resign his position and lose probably $80 million because it turned out that he had been sending messages that had racist and misogynistic and anti-LGBTQ content in it. He claimed that this was not intentional, and it may, we can't judge what's in his heart. But the fact of the matter is that that language was there, and it's coded, and it's hurtful. And it may or may not be a coincidence that the Raiders went from having the highest percentage of African-American players in the NFL before he became head coach to having the lowest today. And this is a study that was done by the FiveThirtyEight. So he may or may not be racist, but his words cost him his job, and his actions were deleterious to African-American players. I think that we want for our children to be armed with the knowledge of what is hurtful to other people and what is not hurtful, so that they can treat other people well and so that they can prosper in what other, someone else here has said is an increasingly global, diverse community. Thank you.
The Juanita Ford here? No, we'll move on then. Katie Schmidt, Federer?
Good evening. My name's Katie Federer. I am a resident parent and taxpayer in the district. This is the third time I've spoken at a board meeting in recent months in support of DEI initiatives, along with many other community members, teachers, students, and alumni. I am grateful to Dr. Hatter and the board for your patient listening and work on so many issues, but especially on this issue. I have to admit, feeling a little disappointed, however, because I thought tonight's report was going to discuss the process by which Yorktown Central School District would be implementing culturally responsive teaching guidelines, as well as diversity, inclusion, and equity initiatives. I was disappointed when Dr. Hatter mentioned that, I was surprised actually, that you do not know which of these guidelines will be implemented, if any. That was very upsetting to me, so I hope that you are listening to everybody that came up here tonight, because certainly to not implement any of these guidelines would be unthinkable. So I look forward to participating in the discussions to come. I hope I'm correct in assuming that community comments that have been presented over the last four board meetings will be entered into these discussions, and I hope that decisions on this matter are made in a timely manner, so implementation is not delayed or neglected. I would be happy to be a parent on the DEI task force. For me, diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives are about three things. Number one, helping all students feel every day safe, included, honored, supported, and respected while at school. Number two, teaching the truth about our history, and that includes history that was brought up tonight that I didn't know about all people. I would love to learn that, and I would love for my children to learn that. But we have to learn about the chapters of our history that have caused generational trauma, especially for persons of color and those with disabilities and the LGBTQ community. Our children deserve to learn that, it is so important. And number three, we need to make sure that our students are exposed to the history and literature which celebrates the contributions and perspectives of our diverse population and its many cultures. I want my children to be empowered with the knowledge, self-awareness, empathy, and understanding that will prepare them to participate in the global community and economy. You said that your motto is understanding kindness, respect, and empathy. I think those should be reordered. It should be empathy which leads to understanding, and understanding which leads to kindness, and kindness which leads to respect. If you cannot understand...
Please wrap up.
Mm-hmm. If you cannot understand the paths and the experiences of others generationally...
Thank you.
Oh, you cannot have that empathy and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Rivera. I want to talk about the importance of the DEI initiative, especially as a Latino male. But before I do, I just want to take a moment to thank the board for your work on the DEI initiative so far, for allowing me to speak, and also I think that all of us should also take a moment to thank all of you for continuing to have these public input meetings. I'm not in your position, but I think it's fair to say that it has been easy, not only for you guys, but other school board meetings, school boards across the country, given the last few months, I really thank you sincerely for that. So I have lived in Yorktown for almost 18 years this upcoming January. I'm going to be 23 years old next month, and I went to school here in Yorktown. I can say that overall I did have, and I continue to have, overall very positive experience here in the town, this is the place I call home. But given the demographics of the town, I am always aware, both in past and present, that I am different, given how my last name, it's a Latino last name, and the way I look. And rightly or wrongly in the sense that people are going to judge me either way, just be it based on how I look and because of my last name, or sometimes before they even get to know who I am as a person. And I could tell you that I would have loved to have had this opportunity to have this DEI initiative when I was going to school. Now, of course, I have since graduated, and I won't have that opportunity, but the students who are coming after me, including some who have spoken here tonight, have that opportunity that I didn't get to have, and of course I want them to have the opportunity to learn and about people who are different than them as much as possible. And it's something that always, never seems to completely release, set in, in terms of how I is purposely ignorant and unaware of how people are of individuals who are different than themselves. And I just want to share a personal, anecdotal, personal story about myself. I do happen to volunteer in Mohegan Fire Department, and the reason why I bring that up is because if you look at me without any of that gear on that I would wear responding to incidents, you may, as I said before, you have people, and I have had people judge me a certain way. But some of those very same people will look at me very differently the moment I'm responding to an incident and helping them with their issue is. Now, there is this notion that firefighters are heroic. Now, I personally, as a volunteer firefighter myself, would disagree with that notion, but that is beside the point. The point being is that it shouldn't take someone doing something with quote-unquote "dangerous" to help the community in order to gain respect, just as a person, as a human being. And just one final point I would like to leave to you all on the board is just the concept of being brave and just having courage, and I'm not saying this as an insult or disrespect to any of you, just sharing myself personally, because it's not easy as someone who is a fire, volunteer firefighter to admit, is that nobody in my fire department or anyone else ever wants to admit that we're scared of anything.
Please wrap up.
It will do. We're always taught to be courageous in the face of danger, no matter how frightening it may seem.
Thank you.
So I thank you for your time, and I wish you the best of luck in all these other DEI, finishing DEI initiative.
Thank you. That was the last speaker. I believe Dr. Hatter wants to clarify something.
If I may, I just want to clarify one of the remarks with regard to which statements would be included, if any. I just want to clarify that piece. We have a process that we're following. The next step in the process is to engage the community. I'm looking forward to sitting down, and we are looking forward to sitting down, having a conversation, and we don't want to get two or three steps ahead. We want to enter these meetings, sit down, hear the feedback, hear the perspectives with an open mind, and then make some smart determinations moving forward. I just wanted to clarify that piece.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Good night.
Good night, everyone.